The way and manner we gather intelligence. And the NGOs can do a lot. They can do a lot. Sentiments apart, the NGOs can do a lot. If you assist in gathering information, you can be able to track people who might behave unreasonably and they can be captured before they even cause any havoc to people. There are issues again where people tend to misunderstand. You have to differentiate between cattle wrestlers who are also fighting the cattle owners. If you don't do that, there are people who hide under the guise of and then over generalization that it is herders. Of course, crises do occur. Sometimes it's difficult to find out from actual herders and those cattle wrestlers. And therefore, the chances of lumping everything together is there. And then when you don't address these issues properly, you are bound to continue to have problems. So I will insist that so long as the issue of failure of governance at the local level is there, we need to find out what our 774 local government in this country are doing. They need to assist. They are the grassroots. They know though, in the past, when a bad man comes into the city or the village, within an hour or two, the village head is already aware of the existence of a stranger. But if you don't pass information to the relevant authorities to be able to act, believe me, we will not be helping our security personnel and we will even put their life in jeopardy. I think if we have to move forward, then we have to look at these issues of climate change. We have to look at the changes, the population explosion that is mounting. If you have a wife and you stay in a one-room apartment, you have two free children, chances are that you would need to move to a two- or three-room apartment. So when our population is expanding and we're taking it for granted and the land is fixed, we cannot afford to use it anywhere anyhow. So whether you talk about ranching or grazing, the fact is that a lot of these grazing reserves that are either gazetted or not gazetted have been encroached upon. The brutalies or the cattle roots, which are marked all over the north, I know. Some of them have been encroached upon, cities have been there. So what do you do with such encroachments? Some of them, you can never recover them. But those that can be recovered, can we do that? And if you can do it, why not do it? And then move ahead from the ranching, from the reserves you are looking, and then up to the ranching, up to a time when we can be able to solve this solution. There is no single solution to this problem. But the most important thing is that we must be less emotive, we must be less sentimental, we must help the security agencies to gather intelligence and pass it to them so that they can process, analyze, and use it judiciously. If we do that, I think we will be helping our country, we will be helping our people. I do not think this problem is for the central state alone. It's not for Benno State alone, it's not for Taraba State alone. It is a national problem and it has to be looked at such. Until we do that, both the religious leaders, the traditional rulers, and the government functionarisms at the local, state, and federal level must put their hands together to be able to solve this problem. I think if we look at this properly, we will go a long way to solve this problem. Above all, life is dead. You cannot create one. You have therefore no business to destroy any. Anybody who is applauding the killing of people cannot be said to be in his right sense of mind. We should all join hands together to condemn these killings from whatever, from wherever it's coming and to know that human beings, once you destroy, you cannot get it back. Even if you give back a child today, you need about 20 years to bring him up to speed to be a normal human being. So why do we have to destroy? There is no reason, absolutely no reason for this. Until we come back to a real way of life, look at governance structures, look at the security structure, look at the intelligence gathering mechanism. If we do these things, it will help us. It is not about the federal government alone, it is not about the state government alone, it is not about the local, it is about the entire society. The NGOs, the prayer groups, the religious group, whatever you want to say, must put their hands together to solve this situation. I believe we have what it takes to solve this problem. We cannot pass it to our children and grandchildren because they will never forgive us. I pray sincerely that God in his infinite mercy will torture our mind and make us to do the right thing at the right time. Thank you very much.
We thank all the panelists, the honorable ministers who have made our presentations here. Your excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. We have in our midst the governor of Kebi State, who is here. And he's at the same time the vice chairman, National Food Security. You all agree with me that as we are talking here, we are talking about peace, we are talking about shelter, we are talking about food. Man must work, Abi. So can we put our hands, ladies and gentlemen, for the governor, as I invite him, to please come to the podium to talk to us. Your excellencies, sir. Senator Bago du Attiku Abubakar. You must welcome him.
The chairman of this occasion and honorable minister of information, Alajilai Muhammad, honorable minister of state health, honorable minister of defense, honorable minister of agriculture, honorable ministers of water resources and environment, minister of state environment, security chiefs, clergy, traditional rulers, religious leaders, community leaders, leaders of different groups, commentators, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon, everyone. And thank you very much, honorable minister, for providing me the opportunity to be here. The National Economic Council meeting is taking place today. And I told you so when I was invited, especially given that both events were scheduled to start at the same time. I'm sure if not for the National Economic Council, more governors will have been here, in particular the chairman of the Nigerian Governors Forum, because this is a topic that is very, very dear to all of us. Let me congratulate you for this achievement because to bring all stakeholders together, to get a dialogue going, will bring us, will help us imposing a common narrative that will help us find a solution to this perennial problem. It is perennial because, as alluded to it by the minister of Interior who had left, the minister of Environment, the starting point is to appreciate that we are dealing with a land use problem. Every geography book, every history book that have size of Nigeria will tell you that Nigeria is a little less than a million square kilometers. It has not been growing. And in fact, with the loss of Bakasi, it even reduced from what it was. So that is a starting point. And in each of the 36 states of Nigeria plus FCT, governors, traditional rulers, religious leaders, community leaders are dealing with land use problem in one way or the other. The farmers are not finding enough land to farm in the way they used to. The fishermen, who we quite often tend to ignore, are not finding enough water resources to do what they want to, particularly in the way they used to do it. The hardsmen are not finding enough land to do what they need to do, particularly in the way we, they used to do it. And all of these economic activities are important. Countries that have been blessed like Nigeria with these three forms of economic activities but choose to form a common narrative and deal with it realistically have achieved a lot. Today, Brazil sell more milk to the global market than we have earned from crude oil exports in the last two years. Brazil earn more money from meat export than we have earned, we are earning from crude oil this year and last year. So, A, to even come to common realization that we are dealing with potentially valuable economic activities if we figure out how to do it right so that everyone can find a place, can find peace, can find economic activity that suits its cultural and environmental space, is a very great starting point. And I believe we can do it. The first thing we have to agree is that a bandit is a bandit. A criminal is a criminal irrespective of what religion he is, what ethnicity he is, what occupational activity is. A Fulani bandit is a bandit. A TV bandit is a bandit. And let us all remember that these relationships that are breaking down used to be done harmoniously. The TV or the idoma used to welcome the Fulani man decades ago because he welcomes his presence to manure his land and probably in that period help his protein need and use his waste. That is why one of the sociologists have started this phenomena, one of the longest and most institutionalized joking relationships in Nigeria is between the TVs and Fulanis. But today it's breaking down because there are more TVs, there are more Fulanis, and everyone wants to farm. Everyone wants a piece of, everyone wants water. And it will break down so long as population pressure come to bear from the limited land, which will force pressure on both land and water resources. Just about two months ago, I called on the minister of Water Resources to tell him that all my rivers are drying up and fishes are beaching. My fishermen were panicking and we couldn't find water to irrigate land. So if it has taken place, maybe involving two states, and one of the states have taken measures to block the water in order to solve his problem, it will have created an interstate problem. That we are dealing with these governors, sorry, as governors in our respective state is an illustration of the true nature of this problem. And that is where the opportunity lies. It is not a religious problem. It is not an ethnic problem. It is not a regional problem. In 2014, I was fortunate to be a member of the Nigerian Senate. And there was a motion on the floor of the Senate expressing concern that in six non-northeast states, i.e. six states out of the northeast, farmers, hardsmen, fishermen cannot go to, cannot either go to farm or herd or fish. Those states are Benue, Nasarawa, Platu, Kaduna, Katsina, and Zamfara. And I was a member of the Senate delegation that went to those six states in 2014 to study some of the problems. That was the year where 91 villages were burnt in Benue between Daudu and Buma. But when we went there, in addition to that problem, one of the most serious problems was the Awatou problem because Awatous, a lot of their lands are in Nasarawa State and it's always a yearly problem. There is a problem in the southern part of the state in Bandeka Local Government between TVs and Jukos. The same thing in Nasarawa State, the Kaduna State. Unfortunately, it's even came up recently with mass killing in Brinewari, which is one of those places that we visited then. Same thing in Zamfara State. So these are not one tribe against the other. We are dealing with economic activities that cannot find enough accommodation and criminals are taking advantage of them. And in fact, worse still, criminals are taking advantage by the buildup of anger in society that is even giving them a cover because rather than focus on the criminality, we look at the tribal identities and allow the criminals to get away with it. And I, I think we must do something soon and quickly about it. In Kebi State, and when the minister came to Kebi, one of the places I said I want him to visit was my prison. And I just wanted him to see the story, what is in the prison. Kebi State has four emirates, distinct tribes, two major religions. But what is in the prison is reflective of the land use challenge. Eighty percent, seventy to eighty percent of the people in prison are there because of one corral or the other as a result of land or water resources. And that's what I wanted the minister to see. So this is not, and I'm sure traditional rulers, their court system, our clergy, the most regular, the most frequent complaints they are dealing with are likely to be land use, land-related complaints. So what do we do about this? I think that is one why we are here and I said we have to change the narrative. We should help live here with a common sense of purpose that bandits are exploiting our anger and are getting away with criminality. And let us agree to call bandits bandits and as a starting point. Secondly, and in this, we must thank the minister of Agriculture, we must thank President Muhammadu Bahari and the government because there is a big underinvestment that has been affecting everyone. Most investment in agriculture has gone to farming, the farming. Today, farmers are likely to have extension workers available to them. Fishermen are not likely to have extension workers. Hardsmen are not likely to have extension workers. Talk of, talk less of loans. And we need investment, significant investment in order to help the farmer achieve more yield per hectare so that he becomes wealthier and he doesn't require a large response of land. We need more investment for the hardsmen to be able to get more yield per cow or even transit into a cow variety that will give him more yield. We need investment so that those Fulani women who work seven kilometers a day or eight kilometers a day to go to a market with 400 naira, 600 naira worth of milk can stop doing that. We need more investment so that we can put more schools for everyone, the farmers, the hardsmen, and the fishing communities so that A, they can make more income and then children can stay in one place and go to school. Luckily, the federal government in the last two and a half years have recognized this and is doing a lot of it. A lot of money has gone into supporting the farming population, more the farming population. Under the Angkor Boro program, close to 70 billion naira has been distributed to about 250,000 farmers in 21 and in 31 states. Under the Accelerated Agricultural Program, more people are being brought in to particularly the pastoralist, the fishing community so that their needs can be met. More, the president has graciously in appreciation of the need of the Nigerian farmers, Nigerian fishermen, and the Nigerian hardsmen have also created a National Food Security Council and has brought in all the ministers that are relevant to the issues that we have been discussing here and the security chiefs and agencies so that we can always develop a holistic approach to the quest for national food security and supporting the life forms of the different land users. Recently, and the honorable minister of Agriculture has already spoken about it, Mr. President, as part of the National Food Security Initiative, had approved 10 billion naira because even though I disagree, I disagree with the representative of the Archbishop that the farmers in IDPs, they only want to go back home. No, Mr. President is fully cognizant of their need. He has been kept abreast by service chiefs. Some of them have left their homes in the way they did. And therefore, today maybe they have nothing to start from. And in recognition of that, Mr. President approved that 10 billion naira initially should be made available where the ministers of agriculture, the minister of finance, the National Emergency Management Agency, and myself will work with the respective states affected by different conflicts and people in camps so that we can work out packages where fertilizer, seedlings, and agrochemicals will be provided to them so that those small-scale farmers who cannot otherwise borrow and who cannot otherwise get financing will begin to go back to their normal lives. And I think that is a very important recognition by Mr. President. And I believe the implementation will start very, very soon. Last, but not the least, is to thank the federal government and in particular the minister of Information that forums like this, I'm sure, will evolve a solution. And to pray that we should get less angry with each other and work with each other so that we recognize and realize the potentials of all these sectors. Our animal husbandry industry potential is huge. And if we invest rightly, we can get as much money as we are getting from any other sector. So is our fishery, so is our farming sector. And I believe these are sectors that need each other and these are sectors that can be done in one way or the other in each of the 36 states of the Federation. Thank you very much.
We thank His Excellency, the Governor of Kebi State, Senator Abubakar Attiku Bago du, Vice Chairman, National Food Security Council, for the beautiful presentation he has made here. Your Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, I'll now invite my colleague to please continue from where we started, please.
Your Excellency, the Executive Governor of Kebi State, very distinguished senators in our midst, honorable ministers, very distinguished ladies and gentlemen. In the course of this town hall meeting today, we've been able to share very useful information. We've been able to exchange very constructive ideas. They said information is power, but correct information brings clear thinking. And clear thinking helps people to make sound judgment. Very distinguished ladies and gentlemen. To me, it has been a very successful interaction today. At this point, very distinguished ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure to invite the chief moderator of this event, the honorable minister of Information and Culture, Alajilai Muhammad, to please give his closing remarks. Honorable Minister, sir.
Thank you very much. Your Excellency, the Executive Governor of Kebi State, members of National Assembly here present, honorable ministers, our presenters, your source persons, representatives of the cardinal, representative of all religious groups, all stakeholders. I think I must, my just to thank you very much for coming here today. I thank you one because I'm quite impressed by not just the number but by the quality of the people who are here. I've also been very impressed by the quality of the very frank contribution that I've had here today. Clearly, you see, when I said at the beginning that there shall be no no-go areas, we will keep to that. And I want to thank all my panelists in particular. I think they've said one thing that was very important. We must not allow our emotion, our anger to be exploited by the criminal elements of society. We have a problem which is about resources, it's about water, land, and utilization of it. And I think this is the issue we'll come here to address. I want to assure you that this will not just be another talk show. From the contributions here, it is clear that state governors are also major stakeholders if you want to find a lasting solution to this problem. To this end, I want to announce that there will be another forum at which the state governors of the major flashpoints in the country will be the panelists to this same issue of farmers and herders clashes. And we also encourage them to please come with their local government executives. This is not to suggest that the problems lie only with the state governors, no. All we are saying is that this is a joint problem between state, federal, and local government. And we intend to look at it in a more holistic manner. Yes, the federal government, as you can see from contributions of the various ministers, starting from Minister of Defense to Minister of Agriculture, Minister of Natural Resources, sorry, Minister of Interior, the Minister of Water Resources and Minister of State and Environment, have all been able to inform us of what role the federal government is taking, you know, to ensure that we find a lasting solution to this problem. So once again, I just want to thank you for the very orderly, matured manner we have all conducted ourselves today. And one thing that is clear from all contribution that Nigerians are desirous of remaining Nigerians. There is no better country than we have and we're all going to work together to make it greater. I thank you very much.
Very distinguished ladies and gentlemen. They said it takes a very successful personality to lead very successful people. Let's give the honorable minister another round of applause. Gradually, we have come to the end of this town hall meeting. But to give the vote of thanks for today, very distinguished ladies and gentlemen, it is woman of extraordinary talent. At this point, very distinguished ladies and gentlemen, join me in welcoming the permanent secretary, Federal Minister of Information and Culture, Dikness Grace Isukagre for the vote of hands. Let's echo it with applause, please. Thank you.
Your Excellency, the Executive Governor of Kebi State, the honorable ministers here present. Please permit me to stand on the already established protocol. My task here this afternoon is very simple. I'm just here, though the minister has already thanked, said the thanks already to you, but I'm to just say thank you to all. But if I do that, then I've not, you know, given justice to the task I have this afternoon. So, Your Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, I wish to express on behalf of the minister our deep and sincere gratitude to you for making our time to attend this special town hall meeting on farmers' herders' clashes. Your presence here today is a clear demonstration of Your presence here today is a clear demonstration of, of our people's commitment and support for the present administration's effort in quelling the farmers' headers clashes as well as promote unity and faith, peace and progress as enshrined in our national motto. I would like to especially thank my indefatigable boss, the Honourable Minister of Information and Culture, Alaji Lyam Mohammed, for providing the necessary platform to address appropriate lasting solutions to this lingering issue through constructive dialogue. Likewise, I wish to thank other honourable ministers and all stakeholders here present for your invaluable contributions to the critical issue discourse here today. Finally, I want to thank the gentlemen and women of the fourth estate of Rem, of the Rem for covering this event as well as giving to this outcome wider reportage as you always do. On this note, I wish you all safe journey to your various destinations and I thank you all. God bless you all.
We thank the Permanent Secretary for the vote of thanks. Your Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, I think I'm one of the most happiest gentlemen to be here. When I was going to come here, I was very, very much afraid. I had to pray because I thought this is going to be a very hot one. But from the look of things, we appear to have agreed to be together. Can we put our hands once more for this unity that we've shown amongst us? Thank you very much. May we all now rise for the National Anthem. Thank you very much and I wish you a safe
Well viewers, welcome to the end of this special edition of the Federal Ministry of Information and Culture Town Hall Meeting Series, which is designed to bring to the fore the need to find a lasting solution to the hards, hardsman-farmers crisis on, in the country. And on this note, on behalf of all those who contributed in making this live transmission a success, I remain yours, Anton Fosin, saying bye for now as we return you to the studio for ongoing programs.